...to prosper. A B and B with owners in residence is a model I can fully support and believe it to be a win-win scenario. This is from Rodrick Beatty, and he votes yes. His property adjoins our property. It's the woods that are right there at the corner of 62 and East Mountain. And so with those three in mind, and the fact that I don't think that I will be any competition to anybody, I mean, I need this small income. I chose to move here because I love Eureka Springs and I love the beauty of it, and I want to fit in here, but I need to make a little bit of a living. And this is how I chose to do it. So I would really appreciate, I would really appreciate if you would offer me the cup. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions, and I'd like to start with Beverly first, if you don't mind.
I was going to ask if I could just speak.
Sure. Then we'll start with you, and then I'll follow. I'll ask, I have some questions for you, though, Beverly, so don't run.
Do you have any other...
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just want y'all to know a little bit about what planning does and why we do some of the things that we do. And this is for R2, and if you turn to page 401 in your code book, it tells you that for R2, the permitted uses, the outright permitted uses are single two-family dwellings and public use. Those are the only things that are outright permitted. But a B and B is permitted with a conditional use permit. So anytime something happens out of the ordinary, that's when we have public hearings and we go through the code, through everything that it tells you. So the next thing it tells you about is page 437. It tells you on that page all about when a CUP is required, and it says approval of a CUP is not a matter of right, but shall only be granted when the purposed use is in harmony with the character of the zone where it is to be located. I know the last time I wasn't able to be here and walk through these steps with you, and it sounded like if they did all the 12 steps, then you had to give it. And I want you to know that it is a right, and it is up to you, you know, to decide, but it's not just if you do this, you have to get this. Then on page 438, it lists all the steps that you have to go through to have the hearing, and we did all that, and they did have parking, and they did send out their notices. Usually you send out notices to all adjacent property owners within 200 feet. They only have five neighbors within 200 feet. So when one opposed to that, that made it 20 percent opposing. So I'm going to show you in your code, it's because one neighbor opposed in writing, then you have to have five votes at your table to approve this.
More than 20 percent?
On page 439, it tells us that as planning commissioners, we have to give particular consideration to adjacent property owners. We have to. So, you know, everybody in the neighborhood got to speak, but we have to give particular consideration. And then on page 440, it gives you a list of all the things that we had to consider. I mean, there's a long list there, all the way through T, of all the things that we had to consider. So sometimes when there's just four, and it takes four votes, and you have that many things to consider, you know, it was just against us in number.
Go ahead, Beverly.
Can I continue with you, Beverly? So there was two votes for and two votes against, and in looking at the record, you voted in favor. At this point, at council tonight, are you still in favor of what, how you voted?
Yes, and I believe that what happened at the one before this made people more scared about how that they were going to vote, because it did get appealed and it did get ugly. And so they really wanted to make sure that the neighbors had a voice and that the neighbors were really heard, and it is a dead-end road. And so if there was a way that when people came to the B and B, that they were, you know, told, "Go out," you know, "Make a circle maybe," or "Go out this way," because it is a dead end, that that would be helpful to the neighbors down there, and I don't think that there would be a problem.
Okay, and then following up to your question about council, on page 442, it says, "When a conditional use is under protest by more, more than 20 percent of adjacent property owners, a three-fourth vote of the full membership of city council is required." But the key word here was, "When a conditional use is under protest by more than 20 percent." This was only 20 percent.
Twenty.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
Just note.
Okay, I want to be real clear here. The one person who disapproved has a lot that's empty, that's adjacent. They themselves do not physically live adjacent, but because they're the property owner, that's why they can speak up. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Then the other thing was, um, isn't at the end of the street, don't they have a bunch of driving teenagers?
They're not within 200 foot, but they did send a letter of protest, yes.
I thought it was the same house that had the driving teenagers, so they're worried about a car turning around when they have driving teenagers. Good luck.
Mr. Perkypile.
So by our, if we were to vote to approve this tonight, then that would overturn the appeal. I mean, that would be the appeal, it would overturn the planning commissioner's vote.
Correct.
Anybody else have any comments?
I do.
Yeah, it's getting cold in here.
It's either hot or cold, one or the other.
Thank you.
Mr. Perkypile.
I just have, I have one question, and you're living there as well?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's, apparently it's more than a one-bedroom house. I couldn't tell, really, what...
We have to make sure that all that was... Make sure that that was followed also.
Mr. Mitchell.
I made a point yesterday to drive out and look at the property and drive down the road, and so that I mentally could see how this property was laid out, and I was surprised at the amount of space between their property and the house that is for sale, that is obviously not occupied, which it needs very high. And then there's a tremendous amount of length again before you get to the house at the end of the road, which surprisingly, fairway up the road has a sign that says, "Private property, no continuing," and yet it's a public road, which I thought was interesting. I guess it's to keep you from getting too close to turning around in the property, but beside that point, I'm very much personally, and I'll just go on record, saying very much in favor of following through with what planning and what you had said that you wanted to happen, and that was that these people have their conditional use permit.
Michelle.
I drove by the place this afternoon. It looks much better than that photograph that we have here. But it, this is a really, really heavily forested area that I swear hasn't been brush hogged for 50 years, and anybody who is in this house would have the feeling that they are living deep in the woods. I drove down to the end, and there is that house. It's been empty. It's abandoned. It's for sale, but it is so far away from this dwelling that whatever activity went on here simply wouldn't affect whoever lived in that house if they ever bought it. This house, it really looks like it's by itself there, and it's really a deserted, it isn't really a neighborhood. There were some other houses there, but they're, they're just, I don't see the problem here. There is a vacant lot next to this house. There wouldn't be any problem with any car pulling up to this house, backing out and turning around, and not having to go down to the end of the road. And it is really close to a commercial. It's right there, right there at the end as you turn down this drive. There isn't a street sign there, by the way. I'm sure the people that have that house for sale at the end would appreciate a sign that tells you you're on Drinon Road. But anyhow, it is, it's close to a commercial area here. It's within walking distance of restaurants, but yet it's isolated. I think it, and certainly it would be extra income for the person who would pay the mortgage for the person living there. It's the best use for the property that I can see, and I absolutely cannot see how it would impact a neighborhood, because there's any neighborhood there in Salt Trees.
Mr. Perkypile.
Anybody else?
Mr. Dwyer.
Beverly, there was a public hearing. How was that attended? What were the comments, pro or con?
They should have put that in the, in your packet. There was a letter from the neighbor at the very end.
I was just curious, who showed up?
Just, just two neighbors, one in the, in the 200-foot zone, and one letter, and that's all.
And the neighbor that showed up was pro or con?
Against.
Against? Is that the one that sent the letter that has the property for sale?
Mm-hmm.
Perkypile.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for conditional use permit for eight Drinon Drive.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, what, there's only one thing about this that bothers me, is that it hasn't been, the wiring and the plumbing haven't been approved yet. Is that going to happen before she can go into business? I would hate to think that the building inspector didn't get out there and approve this. Are we giving her permission to go into business without getting the building inspector's approval?
No, because if you, and that's what he alluded to when he spoke earlier, if someone has to get all their wiring upgraded before they ever got permission to, to do that, then they could have spent a lot of money for no reason.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be sure that the thing was safe and wasn't going to catch on fire. Okay.
So by granting this conditional use permit, that's to go ahead, go ahead and complete it, upgrade anything that needs to be done for code, and thank you very much.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, that moves this on to the town hall meeting update, which is set for August and that, oh, I'm sorry, motion to discuss. I was about to discuss it, wasn't I?
It was the first. Sorry.
Who?
I've touched base with Sally Gurrell, haven't approached the subject with her about being a facilitator, and haven't gone in any details with her on it, but I know she facilitated a meeting probably 15 years ago and did a really good job, so she was my first choice out of the two, John Babes being the second one. So if Sally can't fulfill that August 19 date, then I'll, I'll go with Mr. Babes. And that's all on that subject.
Anybody else? If not, then we will move on to number three, the limo ordinance.
Do we have to discuss the limo ordinance?
Second.
Floor is open.
Okay, I don't know if I'm still just brain dead from vacation, or if I missed something pertinent at the last meeting. According to this ordinance in regards to jumbo taxis, the description therein of jumbo taxi and limousine, jumbo taxi says, "With seating capacity not exceeding 18 passengers and used in like manner as a taxi cab, yada, yada." Limousine says, "With seating capacities not exceeding 18 passengers, used to transfer passengers for hire." What else is difference in the vehicles, other than one owner says, "Well, I'm not waiting two hours," and the other one says, "I will"? What have I missed?
Well, one has a taxi license, and the limousine owner has a business license to run a limousine. I mean, it's pretty cut and dried. I don't see any greater...
Okay, so notice what you're saying is, if all they own is a limo, they don't need the taxi license, but they have to wait two hours. If they have a taxi license, they can still use a limo as a jumbo taxi without waiting two hours, is that?
That's it.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
This solved the problem that we were discussing, we had brought up. It distinguishes, it puts controls on limousines, and it allows the two companies that have, I forgot the word, certificates of something or other, to operate. We approve to operate, the ability to also have a taxi cab of whatever motor-driven vehicle it is, up to 18 passengers. So in a very succinct way, this ordinance looks like it solves the problem that was before us. And I would assume the city attorney has already blessed this?
He wrote it.
Oh, well.
Well, then, of course you like it. Well, now that I understand the only differences in the paperwork, that's fine and dandy. My question is, because I don't know if it needs to be on here or not, Mr. Attorney, do we have to make any kind of arrangements for a taxi cab stand, so to speak, in this ordinance? I mean, most taxi companies or most cities with taxis have a taxi cab stand or stop or pull-over place.
We don't have any provision like that in our code. If you wanted to create one, I suppose you could, but ours is a very simple taxi ordinance. It doesn't have a lot of detail, but some others do. New York City goes on for a volume, but they control everything.
Well, if we would...
It's been a problem, you know, of people having to find them.
Well, in the future, if we do determine that we're going to have a designated taxi cab, would that be added to this, or be under its own thing in another part of the book?
I would suggest that we probably want to be in the same section, but it would be a different subsection than what you're dealing with here.
Okay, thank you.
Perkypile.
Just to add to that, I mean, we, we were all emailed a question and a query from Abundant Taxi regarding that very same situation. So we may, we may have to deal with that at some point in time.
So I'm asking now?
Yeah. Having a specified taxi pull-over space, or spaces, I don't know. But since, since parking is so difficult to find, it's...
Well, evening hours, it's not hard for taxi, if they can use the yellows on it. But that's in the evenings.
You know, as far as I'm concerned, if you're, if you're a taxi and you want to rent that, not rent it, but you can stay in that space all day long, pump quarters in it if you want to.
Oh, yellows don't have meters. But that's insane, after their hours, you know. But it was during the day, that's why I'm wondering.
But in future reference?
Mr. Dwyer.
I'd move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
This is in the real call. On the first, first read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand by.
The ordinance number will be 2181. Ordinance number 2181, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title IV. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current code provisions related to taxi cabs, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the municipal code, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, that 4.32.01 is hereby amended to add the following definitions. Jumbo taxi cab means a motor-driven vehicle with seating capacities not exceeding 18 passengers, used in a like manner as a taxi cab by a holder of a taxi cab certificate of public convenience. A holder of a taxi cab certificate of public convenience may request that one or more of his or her vehicles be designated as a jumbo taxi cab for use under the authority of the holder's certificate, by so listing the vehicles with the city clerk. Limousine means any other passenger automobile or van, not here and otherwise defined, with seating capacities not exceeding 18 passengers, used to transport passengers for hire, which does not operate over regular routes, having fixed termini, or upon regular schedules of operation. Limousines may only be dispatched or otherwise hired, with no less than a two-hour waiting period prior to the pickup of passengers. It shall be a violation of this article to operate a limousine with the pickup location within the municipal corporate limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, without compliance with the minimum two-hour waiting period between hire, dispatch, and pickup. Section two, severability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of the provision other than the parts so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section three, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. Mitchell.
I'm a limousine, and I come into town, and I don't, I pick up people, and I'm obviously not waiting two hours, and it's a, it says here that it's a violation. What happens to me? Who, who enforces this?
Under 4.3, following, under 4.32, the following subsections define a violation of this particular article as being a fine of not less than $10 and not more than $100. It would be enforceable by the police department. It's going to make it hard on them, but it may, and it may even inquire or require of them at some point to do as is often done with compliance of certain other sales requirements, such as alcohol or, or tobacco, where we do spot checks, or we have stings. If it becomes a problem.
Or somebody turns a man that...
Or you can have certainly somebody saying, "I'm being infringed upon by," and then you look into it.
Mr. McLown.
It might be advantageous to maybe set our own set of fines specific to this, because, you know, somebody could come in, if the price is right, they'll come in, and a $100 fine, $10 fine is surely, certainly nothing that's going to cause anybody to stay away.
There's also attached to each fine, a $50 court cost, and it also does define that each action is a separate offense. So if they were hauling four people, potentially, that could be four times the 50 times 100.
Then you're getting where that makes it.
It can happen.
Explaining that helps, so it can get where it makes it, you know, cost prohibitive for them to run that risk.
Any further?
Well, we left something hanging here that I, maybe this taxi stand thing isn't pertinent
to this, but you made a remark that if they wanted to park down there, all they had to do was feed meters or quarters into the meter, and it would be okay for a taxi to stay there and kind of create its own taxi stand? Is that the impression I got?
I mean, people can, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you can rent a space from the city, essentially.
I don't think so.
I mean, when I say rent, you pay for the day.
That's why, that's why people plug their parking meters in. You are renting.
What's the difference if you stay there all day, and you're a private person, or you're this taxi cab?
But if you're, if you're just down there to, well, I'm thinking, it's, it's not, it's advantageous for our marketing, for people who are coming into town to see that we have a taxi service, if there's a taxi there. We've never been asked to have a taxi stand before, because the other taxi cab owner wasn't that interested in being that available, that he was visible all the time and available for hire. So if we have a taxi cab company that wants to do this, and it's good advertising for us, somehow or other, we should have a space down there where the police wouldn't tell him that he would be fined unless he moves, and putting quarters into a meter would cost him, if he's down there for eight hours, it would cost him eight hours a day, because we're changing our meter to a dollar an hour, and that's not fair. I mean, we're getting just as much advantage out of advertising the fact that we have a taxi cab as, I mean, I don't care whose taxi cab is parked there, I just think it's a good idea for people to see that.
Mr. Dwyer.
Okay, we're off, off track here. We have an ordinance on its first reading, and we have read the ordinance, and now we should go to a vote. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2181 on its first reading.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First read. Okay, that brings us to... Number four is demo by neglect workshop update. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
Glenna and I met again today, and we have a rough decision tree drafted out based on the input that we had last time. We've done quite a bit of research, and Glenna's done a lot of work on it, especially since she had obviously had worked on the prior one and had gone through that process. So at this time, we are not ready to show anybody a draft or to even ask for a official workshop. So I would anticipate that we should have something for council to look at in a draft form, probably in June or July, if the process works, because we're being very careful with this and doing quite a bit of research, so that it is a process that meets all the legal requirements, touches on social issues, handles the issues of neglect and trying to get it before it becomes an issue of demolition. So that's it. So need to wait.
Any further?
Let's move to table this item to our next agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Here's this, the number five is the second reading of ordinance 2180.
Second.
Second.
Suspend the rules.
And also suspend the rules.
And read ordinance 2180, not title only.
Hey, I'd second that.
Okay.
Flash cards.
Flash cards.
Mr. McLough.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Elder.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Six zero.
Good.
Ordinance 2180, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 4.1, excuse me, 8.48.
We have to approve ordinance number 2180 on its second reading.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Be back in ten minutes. We'll be back in session. We're starting new business, number one, and new business council salaries was taken off the agenda. Brings us to number two, taxi ordinance, jumbo cabs. Motion to discuss.
We already covered that one, we're on to number three.
Yeah, I'm just making sure, reading it off the agenda.
Strike it.
Brings us to number three, discussion of weekly rentals. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open.
I can start off with that. This, after a couple of weeks of research on this thing, this is really a complicated subject that I think probably requires, if we're going to change the legislation, I think we need to have a workshop on it. What we obviously need to begin with is a definition of tourist lodging, exactly what it is, and is it legal to do this in an R1 and an R2 residential district? Now, the law says that it isn't, but we seem to have a difference of opinion whether it's legal or isn't legal. The building inspector isn't quite sure of his ground that he's on, and I don't know, Tim, is it, what is the status of weekly rentals? Are they legal or are they not legal? And where do we go from this? What do we need to do to give direction on this? And is it really, and I need to ask Beverly this too, if Beverly is still here.
She's behind you.
Well, is this really a problem? You were in the last council session, and you were too, where this came up and it was debated to great length and nobody did, it was, nothing was done about it. I think what we need to do, first of all, is put a moratorium on that 199 business license that gives people permission to do this. Just, there was a moratorium and it was lifted at the end of the last session, and I think it needs to go back on because we need to stop letting people do this until we get our ducks in a row and decide whether this is going to happen in these neighborhoods or not. Do we really want to pursue this and make it illegal and do away with these that are in this neighborhood, these neighborhoods that are operating now, in order to preserve the neighborhood, or do we not have a problem with it? After going through this, and I'm not a bed and breakfast owner, but it seems to me that what happened here, and there's so much stuff to read here on it, that I'm not going to go over it tonight, it would take, we'd be here for an hour just reading all the stuff that I have on this subject. But the way I understand it, and Ann has been a big help researching this for me because she's given me a lot of information, is exactly what happened here. Somebody found a loophole in the wall that made it possibly legal to have a weekly rental in an R1 or an R2 district if you had a 199 business permit to do it. And within a week or two, we had a bunch of applications for people to do that, and there wasn't any oversight, it was not Ann's business to decide whether it was legal or illegal. I'm a little vague on whether you can give somebody permission to do something illegally, even with a business permit, but I need a lot of guidance on this too. Apparently, if we want to protect these neighborhoods, we have to prevent this business of weekly rental because what happens is that people don't really rent them for the week, they also rent them by the day, and this makes it just simply a tourist lodging. There are complaints about this. I don't know how heavy the complaints are. When this first came up at the planning commission, when it was discussed at the last session, were there a lot of people complaining about this and demanding the city council do something about it, or were there not? And when I, I'll give you the floor, James, in a minute, and what I can see can happen here is these 199 permits have to be renewed every year, and they're not transferable. If we decide that we don't want this to happen, we can put a moratorium on these permits, and they will not be renewed at the end of the year, and the people who have these weekly rentals can either apply for a CUP to make themselves legal, and some of the emails I got from people, their justification, yeah, they're not renting to tourists, they're renting to people who need housing because they're doing other things like looking for real estate or finishing up a business project, and they need somewhere to get off a loan, like the people in Derry Hollow House need to be alone to write. Either we can just let these things expire and not renew them, and that puts these people out of business, or they will have advance notice, they can apply for a CUP to the planning commission, which clearly, from our discussion tonight, isn't that big a deal if you have a really good argument that you're not damaging the neighborhood if you're operating this rental property, or we can just simply make them all against the law, or just change the law so that it's legal. Those are options, and I don't know where to go with this. So yours, James, go ahead.
Well, there's no loophole in the law. There are people who are forcing the issue, and the law is pretty explicit about transitory nature of their guests, yet some people feel that by getting a 199, it entitles them to something, it doesn't entitle them to anything. They don't have a permit to do business. So part of what we determined at the last meeting was that there's sufficient weekly rental property in C1, and that we, if I'm correct, that we were moving toward striking the weekly rental and go with the 30-day rental, which would encourage people looking for a place to live in Eureka Springs to find it. There's two issues right now. One is there's very little rental property in the city, and we need more rental property in the city, and the people who have, who felt that they had the authority to rent by the week, they did not have that authority, and enforcement has been a problem, and I thought it was pretty clear the way we discuss things at this table, that those people did not have the right to rent to tourists on a weekly basis, and it devolved into less than a week. So I guess, you know, just to streamline things, I think we had agreed to move to 30 days, strike the weekly rental and just go with 30-day rental.
Mr. Mitchell.
Question for the attorney. Back at the prior council, you developed after a fair amount of discussion, an ordinance that you drafted, that you were promoting at that, promoting at that time, that to wrap in and resolve the issue. Is, is it your legal opinion now that that ordinance in fact is not needed, that in fact the weekly rental concept, it was and still is illegal all along and just needs to be the law enforced?
I think if you truly want to prevent rental by the week within R1 and R2, you're going to have to prevent that by something that's more specific. Now, what I have opined, and what I still believe, is that it is illegal in R1 and R2 to rent to tourists for those time periods. There's a difference in who is a tourist and who is a temporary resident, for lack of a better term, who's renting week to week because they can't afford to pay a monthly rent, or who is needing a short time till they can remodel a home, or till they can otherwise move into a more permanent situation. Most cities allow in R1, R2, and R3 landlords to rent by a week to week, but we're not talking about advertising on a tourist website, we're not talking about renting to someone who's not here to become a resident, or is a resident, but we're talking about somebody who come here to enjoy our entertainment, our art, and take advantage of a few days off from work somewhere. Those are not allowed, and those, by enforcement, I believe our code could prevent, but it would, it would take a very diligent effort to define that. Even if you take Mr. DeVito's statement that there is other weekly properties available in C1, C2, somewhere else, or even R3, you could simply prevent anyone, whether they're transient or whether they're a resident, from renting for anything less than a 30-day term in R1, or even a longer term, to protect the R1 and even into R2, thereby stopping people from trying to operate saying, no, we're not renting to tourists, when they really are. But as far as enforcement, right now, our police would have to look at how things are being rented for our building official, and to whom they're renting, and we could potentially prosecute those that are renting to tourists right now in R1 and R2, if they don't have a previous cup or some other in the R2 that allows them.
You are correct, there is a lot of weekly lodging. You see the signs on 23 and the Eureka Suites, so a lot of the establishments in the commercial zone are we renting weekly, and they have special rates for it, so it's very obvious that there's some good rates out there for weekly. That's not a problem. So what will it take to create an atmosphere of enforcement then? What does council need to do to create enforcement of the current law that you say is adequate?
It may take a greater emphasis on the punishment phase of enforcement rather than on the portion of who gets charged in order to spur the police into action of looking at who should be prosecuted. Right now, the police investigate, or have to be the one that investigates, and if they're not of a belief that they're going to be able to successfully prosecute that, or if they're under the belief that if they do successfully prosecute it, it's not going to be a large enough penalty. I don't know what their reasoning is, but it may be that it's not a great enough penalty to justify the man-hours that it would take, and there are other, I mean, police resources are always limited, and I don't want to speak for our chief because he's not here, but you have to determine, do I investigate a murder first, then do I, and it may not simply, it may simply be so, not that it's being avoided, but that it's lower priority than something else that needs to be investigated, enforced within the city in a general time.
Mr. DeWitt.
I'd like to allocate a portion of my time to Mr. Zasinski.
Thank you. I spend a lot of time on this, unfortunately, because when I go home the fourth order day, guess what we have a problem with down there? Tourist lodging. Unfortunately, there are $250,000 a year city attorney goofed and didn't comply with a new state statute, and now we have permanent tourist lodging. And that's what the city attorney mentioned at the last meeting, the difference between tourist lodging and weekly rental. What we're talking about is the difference between tenancy situations, landlord tenant, and tourist lodging. Those are transient. This code was a, as I stated before, this code broke ground. It was a trailblazer. There's nothing wrong with the ordinance, it's perfectly clear. You cannot rent to transients, not by the day, not by the week, not by the month. In other words, if somebody came here, technically, here's what the problem is with the code, it's too strict, and that was the thing that we were discussing at the last council, is to remove the restriction altogether on rentals for less than 30 days so that the people could rent both to tourists and to tenants. That was really what the effect of the ordinance that was proposed last time would have been. Now, there was a county out in Arizona, Sedona, which completely addressed this issue, and what has, what has changed since this ordinance passed 12 years ago or longer? What has changed is the internet. That's where it comes down to enforcement, although there is no reason why this law can't be enforced. I filed six complaints against one property, I documented it with the pictures of the out-of-state license plates, one from New York from one day, one from Tennessee the next day, and another one from Texas, and what did code enforcement do? Absolutely nothing. There's also another law that says that if you rent to a transient, this is a state statute, that you have to keep a register, a guest register, which puts their name and their address in there and the information on it. All the police have to do is say, show me your guest register. So this person rented for three days, this rented for five, this rented for a week. Weekly rentals are illegal to transients, period, period, period. Now, I have a copy of the Sedona ordinance that the clerk would like to hand them out because this one here, they addressed it, you've got to take the snake and cut the head off, and the way they did it was very simply by making it illegal to advertise on the internet. That's why these people are able to survive today, because 10 or 12 years ago, it would cost a number one fortune to create the website, people weren't looking for lodging on the website. So, what Sedona did, on the last page there, they made it illegal to advertise. And not only they made it illegal for the property owner to advertise, they made it illegal for anyone on the website to advertise. But also, when it comes to enforcement, you know, the city attorney was kind enough to point out to me several weeks ago in a letter he wrote to me, is I was confused over who the chief law enforcement officer of the city was. And he said, "I was wrong, it wasn't the chief of police, but it was actually the mayor." And there's a statute written on this subject here, which says, "Powers and duties of the mayor generally," it's Arkansas statute 14-43504. Says, "The mayor of the city shall be the chief executive officer and conservator of the peace. It shall be his or her special duty to cause the ordinances and regulations of the city to be faithfully and constantly obeyed." And if you read the paper a couple of weeks ago, that's exactly what the city council in Pine Bluff did when they brought this matter to the prosecuting attorney. Because these ordinances that are on the books, that are clear and unambiguous, are not being enforced. And I put six complaints in against one property, and you say you can't enforce them, is because there is no desire to enforce the law. And as the prosecuting attorney said down in Pine Bluff, "The city has a choice. Either you enforce the law, or you repeal the law." And there are things you can do to strengthen it, but you see, the problem is, you know, years ago, my joke was, you know, they ought to change the name of Eureka Springs to False Premise, because that's how we, this whole fiasco started. It started with the false premise that there was a loophole in the law, where there is no loophole. What we have is ignorance of the law. And I used to be a landlord, so to me, unfortunately, it's very clear. I know the difference between a week-to-week tenancy, a month-to-month tenancy, and a annual tenancy. And it basically has to do with, how do you pay the rent? It's in the Arkansas Landlord Tenant Act, if you wanna go and read that, where they bring up these points here. A week-to-week tenancy is how the tenant pays the rent. Some people live there in tile lives, week to week. It used to be, before Section 8 housing, where the government came in and paid it, there was a lot of properties, especially in the slum areas, where the poor people there had to pay the rent week to week, and even had special armed guards that went around and collected every Friday and Saturday. That's what the week-to-week tenancy, and the city attorney explained it beautifully. You know, remember the duck analogy? If it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, and quacks like a duck, it's tourist lodging. And that's what we have here. And the worst thing is, that these people went down and pulled a business license. You don't need a license at all to rent week to week to tenants. Look at your own code. It says right in there, the list of business licenses. There's nothing in there for dwelling units. So, what these people are doing is, they're playing a game with you. And let's see if you're smart enough to, you know, see what they're doing. And their game is, they're trying to establish what's called a vested right. "The city gave us a license, so we can do it." It's a bunch of baloney, and it's time to call their bluff. And if the city doesn't do it, I'm gonna do it, because they have to.
Thank you for your input.
Ms. Snyder.
Are you an attorney, sir?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that. Okay, my question is, a real quick one, the first question. Do we have an R1 and an R1 Victorian, or is it the same thing?
It's the same thing.
All right. Because half the time, it's on there as restriction in R1 Victorian, other times, it's R1. I know, I live in an R1, 'cause we don't have any Victorians, but that's something we do need to look into, you might wanna keep that in mind. Okay, on the ordinance that you wrote for last year that failed the 21/67, looking over it, it looks like it's pretty decent in stuff. I have a problem, once again, even on planning, I had a problem with this 30 days or less. By stopping weekly rentals, by taking out the word "weekly," you cannot automatically put in 30 days or less, because we only have four months of 30 days, we have one month of 28 days. Most people, when they go on vacation for long-term, meaning a month or so, do it on a four-week basis, that's 28 days. We would need to change the 30 to 27 or less, because otherwise, by law, people who are coming here for a month cannot stay on that property for a full month. Especially if you're there for the month, and it's 31 days, you're staying there less than a month. You've gotta determine an exact day, and we have five months that are not 31 days long. But like I said, most people go by weeks. So, that's four weeks, that's 28 days, so it should be 27 or less. The second part of my comments in regards to this, first of all, this has been argued for how many years now? Two years? I mean, seriously, argued for two years, and it's still at the table? We still can't agree. Half the population says, "Fix the wording, grandfather." The other half says, "Fix the wording, do not grandfather." I have a major problem with Person A telling Person B, "Screw you." I do not like this. It's not fair, it's not right. Especially when people have been doing this business for 10, 15, 20 years, whatever. When there is an oversight at the city level, whether it's through ignorance of the law, plain oversight, miscoded books when they got redone, it doesn't matter. When the law for the weekly thing, or the transient thing was first done, it was never included with the weeklys. It's in different places, nobody ever put the two together. So, we have someone doing weeklys for Eons, and all of a sudden, they're told they have to quit? That isn't fair. That isn't right. Person A doesn't like Person B so tough, "You have to quit." It was the city's fault, and that means everybody from every level down, it was their fault for not catching it. These people should not be penalized because of either misinterpretation of the law, and oversight, or ignorance. It doesn't matter which of one of those it was. These people who have been doing it, and I don't mean anybody who comes in here tomorrow, these people have been doing it since last year at least, and further back, should be grandfathered.
Mr. B.
Nobody's talking about penalizing anybody, and disregard for the law doesn't give you any rights in society. So, if someone's been breaking the law for the last 10 years, then they don't get any special privileges. They don't get grand. Excuse me, I have the floor. They don't get any special privileges, like was pointed out by the city attorney, we don't have a police force big enough to be everywhere at all times. So, yeah, some people do get away with crimes. And in no way, shape, or form, am I gonna be partying to any grandfathering anyone in who has been illegally operating tourist lodging by the week in R1 or R2.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, I totally appor your use of the word criminal activity, or the phrase. People who have been doing this did not go out to do this to be criminals. That is forethought. They did not do it to be a criminal. They did it because they thought it was legal and permissible. Whose fault was it that somebody didn't know? Is it the mayor for not pointing out? The council? The city attorney? The city clerk? Whose fault is it that these people didn't know they weren't supposed to? That's what I'm trying to say. It was the whole city's fault. There is no, in this case, laying blame on one certain level. Everybody was involved, nobody caught it. They were not trying to be criminals, they were trying to conduct a business. Nobody caught it, nobody understood it, nobody knew it.
So?